Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 8th, 2017, regular session of the Xenia City Council. We've been in special session and executive session discussing personnel matters and purchase and sale of property matters since 5:00 this evening. And we are now ready to begin our regular session. We will open with a moment of silence this evening, followed by the pledge led by Councilman Lauterbach. If you would please rise with me for the moment of silence and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lauterbach. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Here.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Here.
Councilwoman Mays.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
Motion carried.
Now motion, please, for the May 25th, 2017, regular session minutes.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by the mayor, second, please.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Discussion or question on this first set of minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now motion, please, for the May 25th, 2017, regular session minutes.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by the Vice President, second by Councilman Wallace. You guys are getting ahead of me. Any discussion or question on this set of minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. This time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please feel free to do so. Step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments, three to Seeing none, we will move to reports of committees. First, Councilman Lauterbach, MVRPC, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are adjourned until August. We're like Congress, we're gonna be off.
Thank you. I assume that there's nothing for a MVRPC then. Moving to Councilwoman Mills, Board for Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities, please.
Thank you. We just had our meeting on Tuesday, and it was a very good meeting that we had. We discussed the beautification awards. We'd like to reestablish them. Last year, we took them and seeded them for a year due to the lack of people participating. So we want to let everyone know that these beautification awards is not just having the most beautiful flowers or the most beautiful trees. It is for any place, home, residential, commercial, a business, anything that stands out in your community. Something that just shows that someone takes pride and interest in their belongings and their home. So if you would like to nominate a beautification award, what you need to do is to either email or you can also send a letter to our city clerk, Michelle Johnson, and she will then bring those notifications to us. And it is not any kind of form that you need to fill out. We just ask for you to be able to give us the address so that we can verify that this house is beautiful and that someone's not playing a really bad trick on us. But we just want to make sure that we are opening this up, and we want to really to be able to benefit it, because when I drive through neighborhoods, it is amazing, the beautiful homes that we have here in Xenia, and how people really take an interest in making their homes so beautiful outside. We also have pictures that are, we're taking for the Tree Committee. They have this wonderful program right now, and I thought it was just trees that they are taking nominations on, but it is anything, plants or anything like that. So it's for early spring and late spring pictures. So the Tree Committee is again looking for a picture, so that would be another way, and again, just send them to Michelle Johnson. We have an open seat on our BRACA board. We are seeking for individuals who are motivated and making a difference, and that's not hard to do. I think all of us have that in us. And so what we ask for is that if you are interested in being, fulfilling a seat on the Board of BRACA, to please write a letter of interest to Michelle Johnson, our city clerk, and then I will be giving you a call to see if you really are interested and will be a good fit for us, and I am looking forward to meeting a lot of people this way. And that is basically what we had talked about. We also had an update on our fishing derby, that it was a wonderful activity that we had this past Saturday, that every child walked away with some kind of gift or prize. There was about 70 children there. We also found out that the Green County Fishing Game had their fishing derby on the same date, and there was about 70 children there. Normally, we have around 120, so our numbers were just a little bit down, but we have already made efforts in talking with game and fish to make sure that we don't have the same date, and also seeing what we can do to pull together and to make a greater event for both. And honestly, that's about all we had for this meeting.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilwoman Mays and Traffic, excuse me, and Board of Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities, please.
Mills. She said Mays.
Mills, Mays.
One of those Mays.
Can you tell us, it's been a long day? Anything? Thank you. Councilwoman Mays.
Yes, thank you.
Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry.
Traffic Commission met this past Monday. We had two items that we discussed. We discussed South Whitman that runs here along the city building and between us and toward Independence, between East Second and East Main. There was discussion of possibly making that a left turn only, or I'm sorry, a right-hand turn only, but that would have been. However, we have decided to hold off on that. Toward Independence has taken some ownership of the landscaping in front of their building. They scaled it back, and it really looks very nice. It has opened the visibility quite a bit. So at this time, we're going to leave it as is, where you can turn left, go straight or right, and just take some time to evaluate how that's going. We also discussed the traffic light that will be going away on June 12th, the light that is at South King and West Main, that was actually scheduled to go away in August. The controller failed recently, so we decided it's not worth replacing for two months. So it actually worked out quite nicely. So it will be going away June 12th.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilwoman Mays and Traffic, please?
I noticed that the two parking spaces there in front of Toward Independence and One Bistro have been lined off. Does that mean that there's no longer parking, going to be allowed there?
Is it two or just one?
I think it's two.
It's one big one.
I think it's one.
One big one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And of course, the other day, somebody was, the locksmith or somebody was using it and was parked there. Of course, that big truck made a big difference, because I was trying to go across and couldn't see to get across, but it makes all the difference in the world when there's nothing in those two spaces.
Right.
So it's easier to make a left turn or...
Especially with the landscaping improvements.
Absolutely.
It's much easier to see.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to comment that thanks to a lot of work, city staff has done, the improvements at hospitality and Main coming into town, and a lot safer. Thank you.
Thank you. We did talk about that a little bit, and talked specifically Chris Berger, and just thanked him for his work on that. He has put a lot of effort into that. He had written several grants, which I did not realize, and he just kept writing and applying for them until one came through, and he got it done.
It's been a longstanding issue coming into play with the grant finally coming in. Was it two and a half years?
Yeah, it's been in the queue for quite a long time.
Thank you very much.
And it seems to have already made a difference in the relief of the traffic and progress.
Yes.
It's definitely made. Dale would know better than anybody, because it worked there.
Big difference.
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Mills, Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on May 22nd. There were two items. The first was a variance request to allow six-foot-tall wood privacy fence to be constructed in the front yard of a corner lot at 2326 Minnesota Drive, filed by property owner Sean Davison, and that was denied. The second was a variance request to allow placement of a temporary classroom structure in the front yard at 1694 Pawnee Drive, filed by ASA Architects for Summit Academy, and that was approved.
Thank you very much. Anything for Mayor Bayless and Board of Zoning Appeals, please? Seeing none, we'll move to items from City Council and Mayor. I have no scheduled items. Is there anything that needs to come before the...
Yes, Mr. President. I have one. Maybe Brett knows this. Which council member is assigned to source water protection? This was in my mailbox, so I don't know if I'm assigned to that or if it just got to the wrong person.
We can double-check. I know it was, I believe, on the list when we did the...
It probably is. I'm gonna check on it.
You can just get that with me.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for, from my colleagues, please? Seeing none, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two scheduled items this evening, and I wanted to take an opportunity to provide a couple of other updates, since it's a short agenda. First, pursuant to Xenia City Charter, council must adopt budget priorities no later than July 1st of each year. City staff has worked with council to accelerate our budget priorities conversation this year to better align with the county's tax budget calendar, thus making our budget priorities discussion more meaningful in the budget development process. After a productive conversation with council in a work session on May 25th, staff now respectfully submits the 2018 budget priorities for approval as directed by city council. These priorities, among other things, reflect a continuing emphasis on economic development activities, quality service delivery, and conservative financial administration. Staff recommends approval of a motion to adopt the 2018 budget priorities as submitted.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to adopt these budget priorities for...
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Lauterbach, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Thank you. I'm very pleased with these budget priorities. They are much in line with what we had asked for last year and in our previous years, and I think reflects the desire on all of us to move forward, but to do so in a very fiscally responsible manner. There's nothing else? Roll call, please.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next this evening, our requested actions regarding the city's former landfill. The city's former landfill has been closed for decades, but we maintain an obligation to ensure the post-closure monitoring functions are carried out effectively and in compliance with all applicable state and federal requirements to ensure public safety and environmental sensitivity. City staff, with the assistance of third-party private consultation, has maintained an active monitoring program and has worked over the many years since the closure to address any water or air quality issues through approved mitigation measures. These efforts allowed the city to be in generally good standing with the Ohio EPA despite lingering issues with gas migration resulting from natural decomposition processes. Within the last approximately 18 months, the Ohio EPA, likely in response to federal EPA pressure, has taken a more aggressive compliance approach with local communities facing situations such as ours here in Xenia related to our closed landfill. Despite an ongoing and productive collaboration with personnel from the OEPAs Southwest District Office, we've recently received correspondence from the OEPAs Central Office, excuse me, suggesting a new course of action may be necessary in our landfill gas mitigation efforts. As a result, staff feels that it is in the city's best interest to retain specialized legal counsel to assist us in navigating these uncharted waters. We understand city council's interest in ensuring both safety and compliance at the closed landfill. With that, we also understand that any mitigation measures taken should work in the best interest of our taxpayers and ratepayers to ensure cost-effective actions. For these reasons, staff is recommending this evening that city council approve actions to adopt as an emergency ordinance, an appropriation of $20,000 to $20,000 in the 613 Sanitation Fund for the purpose of resourcing specialized legal counsel, and second, to authorize an agreement with the Van Clay &amp; Walker Firm LLC for professional services added not to exceed cost of $20,000 as specified in the provided engagement letter. This matter is a high priority and time-sensitive, thus justifying our emergency designation this evening.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, first, please, as an emergency, to appropriate the $20,000 into the sanitation fund?
So moved as an emergency, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Wallace as an emergency, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And now motion, please, to authorize the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Van Clay &amp; Walker.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills, second, please. Second by the Vice President. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Again, a few updates this evening. First, the downtown safety project that we've talked about previously with council will be commencing later this summer, approximately August 1st, according to ODOT's plans. Councilwoman Mays mentioned the one stoplight downtown that will be coming out. That is one of the components of the project. We will be initiating a pretty aggressive public awareness campaign to help prep the public for the work that's about to ensue and the changes that are coming later this year. So please look for that. We want to be very aggressive in getting that information out, so folks know what to expect. The Bennett Play Depot and Splash Pad has been open now for a couple of weeks. I wanted to take a moment tonight to take a public opportunity, applaud this council for encouraging this project, for authorizing and endorsing the project. It has, by all accounts, been a rousing success. I've had several opportunities in the past couple of weeks to go by the park. If you've been by there, you will have seen, as I have, it is regularly busy, and not just, I mean literally dozens and dozens of children. Parking lot is full. Excellent utilization of that new amenity. And, you know, I think what's interesting in the work that we do, we don't oftentimes have opportunities to bring true joy and happiness to our residents. This is a project that has literally brought joy and happiness to some of our youngest residents, and I think many of them are having the time of their young lives over there. So kudos to the council for your efforts, for allowing us to engage, you know, in a project like that. It's really enhanced our community in a positive way. A couple more notes on that project. We do have plans to make a few adjustments to the sites, to the site for safety purposes. This will include installations of some additional fencing. We're looking at the first or second week of July to have that fencing in. Councilwoman Mays has been instrumental in holding us accountable to make sure that we're addressing some of those safety issues, so...
That was a nice thing, wasn't it?
So you can congratulate her, and I'll blame her.
I'll take that.
No, but in all seriousness, there were some legitimate issues that were raised, not only by the Councilwoman, but by some other community members, and just some tweaks that we made to it to make the environment a little safer. Additionally, we've had numerous requests from residents asking that we consider designating the site as a no-smoking area. So we are actively evaluating that. We'll have some discussions with legal counsel and look at what we can and can't do. I would suspect within the next couple of weeks, we'll come back with some recommendations for council on that. So again, a lot of public, actually quite a bit of public, pushback on that issue. And I would just encourage folks, please help us take care of that site. It was an expensive project. It's an amazing amenity. Help pick up the trash. Help monitor it. If you see kids that are not respecting it, call dispatch. We'll take care of it. And we have a security system there that helps, but, you know, there's nothing better than our residents policing those assets and really taking pride in this. So we just encourage folks to really, to help police that site. On the business front, I wanted to let council...
Before you leave, the Splash Pad Park...
Sure.
...place, I had a member of my congregation was telling me that she understood that there was a dedication of some space to Mr. Bennett, and she didn't know where it was or what it was, and she happened to be standing at my car talking. I said, "Jump in, let me go show it to you." So she got in the car, and we rode over. I think it was Monday or Tuesday afternoon, I don't remember which day, but it was gorgeous, and the weather was beautiful, and we went over, and I just could not believe, you said, you said it yourself, that the number of people that was there, I couldn't park, because all the spaces were filled, but I just did a drive-through and let her see, and then, of course, the Bennett Station sign was up, and I said, "That is what was dedicated to Mr. Bennett," so right there.
So it's a good tribute to him, and again, we enjoy the partnership with the Railroad Committee folks who take care of the caboose. It's a phenomenal asset to have there, and again, the folks with the Friends of Xenia Stations, another partner in that site. So it's a good, it's a great location and a great way to memorialize Mr. Bennett as well, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Again, on the business front, I wanted to let council know that even when we're not bringing back direct updates to city council regarding our industrial retention and recruitment activities, our staff is still actively working with our local business community to advance their efforts. Recently, Steve Broadskay, Development Director, and I had an opportunity to coordinate a meeting with representatives from the Green County Department of Development, as well as the Dayton Development Coalition, at the Xenia office of Esterline Technologies over in Bel Brook. Esterline Xenia is a fabricator of high-tech simulation systems. Their major lines of work are in the defense industry, but they have some commercial product lines as well. We had a fantastic visit, very productive, came out of that conversation with some follow-up action items. We'll be working collaboratively with the folks at Esterline and DDC in Green County to help meet some workforce placement needs that they have, offering some assistance in those functions, as well as some other things. And Esterline, I think, is an example, and the reason I wanted to bring it up tonight. This is an amazing local business, doing world-class work, high-tech, I mean, this is defense-related. Xenia isn't recognized as a community that has those sorts of industries, but we are blessed to have a very diverse industry balance in our community. Enterprises like Esterline are fantastic. I think they've got about four dozen employees. They're actually adding a few more additional positions, all professional engineer and accounting type of positions here in Xenia. So again, a lot of efforts that we, you know, we undertake sort of behind the scenes, under the radar, but I want to give you a sense of council that we are continuing to do those things on a regular basis, even stepping up those efforts. So again, just a brief report on that front. Finally, two exciting things. Planning's well underway for the 2017 Kevin Sunny Cab and Memorial Fireworks Festival in conjunction with July 1st Fridays, so we want to invite the Xenia community and any interested neighbors to join us downtown on July 7th, starting at 4:00 p.m., for live music, activities, and great vendors for the July 1st Friday. Then folks can transition down to Shawnee Park, where we will have more free games and activities, including bouncy houses, bicycle parade, and a decorating competition for bikes, adult and kids fishing derbies for prizes, truck competitions, and of course, capping off the evening with an amazing fireworks display from the world-renowned Rosy's Famous Fireworks. This event has grown into a very special event in our community. There are even more activities set to take place this year, so we're very excited to get the planning underway. I don't know if Keith can zoom in on this. You'll see these signs hung up around town flyers. Folks can check these out for more information. Check out our website, explorexenia.com, for additional information. And again, this provides all of the information on the activities, where to meet, and that sort of thing. So again, great, great, great activity coming up in July.
Mr. Mayor, would you turn that back over and back, put it back up? I'm wondering, no, on the other side. I'm wondering if that's a typo just beneath your finger. You moved your finger. The bouncy houses for all?
Well...
I can validate that. I've been in one in the past five years.
Thank you, that's right.
I'm looking for a very politically correct response to that, and I haven't found it yet, but...
Me and Lauterbach and I were discussing that when we sat down.
There has been a build-in, that's all I'm saying.
We were deciding that we didn't think there was one that was equipped or adequate for us.
If you're a kid at heart, maybe we'll give it a try.
I'll pass.
Okay.
Me too.
One final additional announcement. Our next Neighborhood Night Out event is scheduled for June 13th, next week, at Cox Elementary from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We have our returning partners, which includes, of course, the city, Xenia Community Schools, Kettering Health Network, Kroger, Central State University, and Ohio Means Jobs. We'll be joined by new participants, including the National Park Service and the Green County Public Health. Again, Ohio Means Jobs, they have resources that they will have onsite, that they can give information for folks who are looking for jobs, looking for new opportunities, so, you know, come down to Cox Elementary and check it out. As always, we'll have free food, bouncy house for the kids, various activities, and a dance competition for prizes. I will not be dancing.
[laughing]
I think I'm excluded, I'm ineligible. So I encourage council members, if you're available, please stop in, connect with residents out there. It's a great opportunity to really talk with folks one-on-one. I think we've made some really positive progress, in particular with city administration, fire and police, being able to connect one-on-one with our residents, and it's a great environment to do that. Our last event over at Shawnee, was it Shawnee? We had just an amazing turnout. I mean, we literally ran out of hot dogs halfway through it. I mean, had to go and get my hot dogs.
From the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, it was, and we expect at least preliminarily fairly good weather next week. So again, please, if you have the opportunity, come out. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Anything for our City Manager, please?
Just one quick question. I was on vacation last council meeting. I was reading the minutes about the Hamvention.
Yes.
Do we have any clue how many people attended ballpark?
Yeah, we're actually working with the county and with the Hamvention folks to get some statistics. We're actually going to do some outreach to some of our businesses to understand the impact. I have been told, I don't have specific numbers yet, Councilman, but I've been told that they were close to their estimates in terms of the turnout. But, yeah, we talked about it a little bit last time in the memo, the briefing memo in preparing for council, I speak to it as well. There are a number of steps that we're taking to start to look at next year. We've already started that discussion. taking to start to look at next year. We've already started that discussion. I definitely want to make sure that we're addressing some of the traffic and parking issues. Wasn't horrible, but can be improved. The other big thing we've got to focus on is how we keep more of that business here. And we were, we just didn't, we weren't able to capture as much as, as we, as we had hoped to. So we've already, actually have a couple of ideas on how we might better do that. But I would hope we'd be able to come back, get that, some of that information from Hamvention and the county, be able to come back and provide some statistical information to give you guys a point of reference on the scope of that event.
And for the public's information, it's a three-year contract.
They signed a three-year contract. The discussion that we had at our first debrief meeting seemed to indicate that all systems are go to exercise that second year, next year. The Hamvention folks have made a pretty substantial economic commitment in terms of infrastructure at the, at the fairgrounds. All of the partners have a pretty substantial cash stake in the game in terms of, you know, whether it's overtime, materials, whatever it might be. There's no doubt it has a significant economic impact in the region. We just want to make sure that we're getting a good chunk of that and keeping it with our businesses here locally.
Thank you.
Anything else to the city manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening. The scheduled bill is the amount of $917,974.81.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Any discussion or question on any of the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Anything for our Finance Director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director?
Okay, great. Thank you. We have three ordinances this evening for your consideration. The first is our ordinance, rezoning two parcels at 1017 and 1051 Stevenson Road totaling 13.941 acres from R1A, One Family Residential to A1 Agricultural District, originally introduced by Vice President Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for passage. Thank you. Move for passage. Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have an ordinance amending Ordinance 17-03 to make adjustments and appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Xenia during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017, originally introduced by Councilman Wallace. This is $22,000 in cemetery costs.
Yes. I'll just move for the passage.
Thank you. Move for passage. Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. By no's. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? I think, Mr. City Manager, there were questions that were asked a couple of council meetings ago in regards to our potential investment in the cemetery. Is there anything that council should know before, before voting?
No. Based on everything we've evaluated, we're, we're good to go at this point. And we actually had some follow-up discussions with a member of the community who'd raised a couple of questions, and I think there were a couple of misperceptions about what we were doing. We're, you know, in general, we will be seeking cremation as the forms of, of, of processing these bodies. And so, you know, there is such, plenty of room for setbacks and everything else. I should note, we were made aware by some of the board members with Woodlawn Cemetery that they were interested in talking with us about the possibility of providing some, some plots at a, at a reduced rate. So I've asked Mr. Brodsky and our Development Department to go ahead and contact them, noting that these items are on tonight. We would still request that you move forward. Before we finalize any of this, however, we will check with them just to make sure that, you know, what we've requested from council is the best decision. I still think it is, but we want to do our due diligence with Woodlawn. If there's any deviation from that, we'll wait. We'll come back and present a conversation. But, but again, I wanted to just note that we'll follow up with them too. We had previous discussions with them, I should say. We didn't just ignore that, but there was just some additional information that came forward on that.
Thank you. Anything else, please? Councilman?
You still have the bodies in your office?
Unfortunately, I do. Actually, we're up to six right now.
Wow.
Yep.
Not bodies, though.
Remains.
Remains, yes.
Remains.
Yes. I'm never alone. Anyway.
I'm not asking for anything further. Roll call, please?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Last, we have an ordinance authorizing the city to obtain an interest in real estate at two enumerated parcels for preservation of an historic cemetery and development of a new municipal cemetery, initially introduced by Councilwoman Mays.
Thank you. Move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage. Second, second by Councilman Wallace. I'm almost afraid to ask. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything for our Law Director, please? Seeing none, we'll move to readings of communication and discussion. Councilman Lauterback, please?
Thank you. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mays.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Mills.
Well, thank you. I just want to remind everyone of some of the great activities that we have coming up in Xenia. So many times that these activities are not mentioned often enough, and I want to thank everyone that, that is involved in these things. That includes our Neighborhood Watch, Night Out, and it also includes the fireworks, the Sunny Camp family. But also, there's this Saturday from 11:00 till 2:00 at Key Chrysler, there's going to be a auto show, for lack of a better term. I'm not quite sure exactly what it's called, but the reason why not only is it here in our area and people love to look at these really cool cars, but Ex Out Hunger was asked to be part of that also. And so we're going to be setting up a tent there and a table and discussing how much that we do care about our people and, and how a community helps the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I am going to be on vacation next week, so I'm going to miss the Neighborhood Night Out. And really, really enjoyed the Shawnee affair, the last one, so I'm going to really miss being at Cox Elementary School. But I'm sure that everybody who will get there will enjoy themselves and have a great time. But I'm going to get to see Branson, Missouri for the first time, so I'm looking forward to getting there.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. I recently attended the Community Action Partnership Day. It was held at Shawnee Park. It was a very beautiful day, and we enjoyed the entertainment of the Diamonds and Pearls Dance Group. The mayor's prayer breakfast was held last Friday at the Schindler Banquet Center. It was very good, and the Gazette reported, so I know it's true, that the record of attendance was more than 350. Funds are always donated to local charities, so we appreciate that. And then I was able to meet with a group of about eight young interns from the Colonel Young home. They were very eager to be involved and asked very interesting questions, and so they're really excited about their role as interns, so we appreciate them as well. And then I'm on the foundation board at the Green County Library, and we got an update when we met yesterday. That group is responsible for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It's a book gifting program for all Green County children up to the age of five. They get one book a month, and to date, they're have, they have 2,830 graduates, and they have issued 153,466 books that they've mailed out. So it is a very successful program, and they continue to have fundraisers to raise money so that the parent pays absolutely nothing and the books are given as gifts. And Business After Hours was held this evening at Collet Propane. Of course, I didn't go because I was here. Did I see it?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. The Xenia Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from June 1st was actually moved to the next Thursday, June 15th, at 7:00. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I just have one item. I attended and participated in the fishing derby this past Saturday. It was a great event. Wonderful day out at Shawnee Park. There were probably 75 or 80 children there. The event went really well, and the thing that I just blew me away, I got to watch a, I would guess he was eight, nine, 10-ish years old, land a 32-inch catfish that, as he held it up, looked larger than he was. And I understand that this young man is a regular fisher at the lake and respects the lake, respects our catch and release, and has caught many large fish out of that lake. And needless to say, in all the trophies that were given out, he was clearly the winner of the largest fish caught. He probably fought that fish for five to 10 minutes, I'm guessing, before being able to land it. Quite, quite the catch, and really a, a great event. It, everyone there is, is happy to be there, and it just is a great way to show a, a very pleasant sport to engage in to Xenia's youth. So I would encourage anyone next year to please plan to participate for children. I forget what the age range is that they go up to.
Three to 15.
Three to 15. Wide range. Come out and support your community, and your kids will have a great time. Probably eat some hot dogs, get a free t-shirt, that sort of thing. Other than that, I have nothing else for this evening unless someone else has something to add.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we go back to executive session to discuss personnel matters, to consider an appointment in employment, discipline, dismissal, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee.
Thank you very much. Have a motion to go to executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.